All right, we're all ready. This morning is predicated from a meeting of the Water Committee that took place last week. Jim's going to go over with you a couple of issues going on at the water plant, some things that we potentially need to deal with, and some options, because of course, any time you get into that discussion, then the next discussion you have to have is how are we going to pay for it. So after that, I'll just basically leave it to Jim, so he can kind of explain to you what's going on.
Well, as you know, the water plant's 21 years old now, and... What's that?
He'd say pass and down.
Oh. Anyway, like I was saying, it's 21 years old now, and one of the biggest issues is the SCADA system, which is the brain of the plant, is dying a very slow death. And the way it's explained to me is there's three main panels, and there's called a bit in each one of those, and every one of them are going bad right now, and they cannot be replaced. So if one of those go dead, I mean, we have no idea of telling the levels in the water tower, the levels of any of the tanks in the plant. It does not measure our influent water, our effluent water, so I mean, that's something that we really need to replace.
How old is it, Jim?
It's 21 years old, so it's 1990 technology, and it was probably dated by the time it was put in then. And it's an analog system, it'll be updated to a digital and Ethernet-ready system, and would last probably another 20 years. And the cost of that is $50,000 to upgrade that. The next thing is the line feed equipment. It's 21 years old also, and what would happen if that would go down? We have a four to six week lead time getting one, so we would be unable to soften our water during that time, and we would end up with red water throughout the whole community, because there would be no way to drop the iron out of the water. It would stay in suspension until it gets into the distribution system. Then we have a rusty scale in the system that we have to try to get rid of, which could take anywhere from four to six years to get rid of it once it's there. Then you have to worry about nitrate bacteria starting to form in the pipes, and then you've really got problems. The other thing is, we have two high-service pumps. They're both the same age, have the same amount of hours on. One of the motors is starting to make a funny noise, and these have been well-maintained. We spend, like I said here, about $750 a year just to redo the pumps, to rebuild them. And they're getting to the point now where we can't rebuild them anymore. I mean, things are just that worn out. The motors are 75 horsepower motors, and I'm just thinking we need to replace one of these and have one on hand, because what would happen if one would go down, both being the same age, probably wouldn't happen, and the other one go down, we're sitting without any way to get water to the tower. So we'd be pretty much screwed, we wouldn't have any water.
The line is also 21 years old?
Yes, all original. The line feed equipment's approximately $22,000, and the pump is $12,500. And I think it's well worth the council investing this money into the plant so it'll last another 20 to 25 years, otherwise we're going to end up with a scenario like out of the sewer plant where, you know, when it's gone, it's gone. So the total cost of everything is $84,500. We could get a low-interest loan through National Rural Water Association at 3% for 10 years. The annual payment, if we did all three, would be just under $7,500. If we did just the SCADA and the line feeder, it would be about $6,300, and if we did just the SCADA system, it'd be $4,300. And the only way we can pay for this is to increase our rates. We have not had a rate increase since 2008, and if we would up the minimum charge, $1.25 a month, would generate $17,000 a year, which would more than make the payment. If we would do a 2% on the rate per thousand, would generate another $7,200 per year, and the average cost of what a customer normally uses is about 4,000 gallons a month. The total cost would be $1.79 a month to everybody in town, which is less than a nickel a day. And, you know, I think everybody in the community can afford $1.79 a month. And I think from here on, the council really needs to look at doing an annual cost of living or rate of inflation on all our utilities every year, so we don't run into this problem going eight years and all of a sudden we have to do a 20 to 30% rate increase. I know me, as a customer, would rather see that than all of a sudden have to do like we did at the sewer plant.
Jim, you mentioned red water. Is that from the lines? That's not coming out of the aquifer that way.
Yes, it comes out of the aqua.
It does. I thought the red one was underneath the river down here where we were.
Now, we have anywhere from two to three parts-per-million iron coming into the plant all the time, and through the aeration process and the line softening, we drop it down to .01. So I mean, that's a big decrease.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
You might mention, you know, what would it cost if somebody were to do their own softening in their house?
Well, like Bruce said, over in Fort Dodge, the lifetime of a water heater over there is five years, because they have such bad water.
Hard water.
Hard water, and you're talking $800 to $1,000 every five years, or $200 bucks a year just to put back for a water heater. Plus, you would have your softening equipment, your monthly cost for rent and salt. So I mean, really, this is the cheapest way to do it.
One of our greatest assets is our good water. Rita, their water is so poor, even with a water softener in the house, it eats up the faucets. It'll corrode them so bad that they won't even work anymore. So I think we don't realize a lot of times what we really have.
Till you go someplace else.
Good waters are not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it tastes terrible besides that.
Well, a lot of times, other towns are red. And they stain sinks and...
With softeners, they use salt, so you have a high sodium content in your water. And they haven't yet, but...
I'm sorry.
I'm sure the state or DNR will regulate sodium in water sooner or later. They have a suggested contaminant level right now, and that's 20 parts-per-million, and ours has 18 parts-per-million natural. And we're able to drop some of that out through our process also.
Jim wanted to give you a couple of different options here, because, not that there isn't an arguable need for all three of the purchases, but he wanted to kind of give you some options to consider, so you guys could provide some feedback. And I, for one, think the SCADA, the SCADA system is an absolute necessity. I mean, can you imagine if he was still using a 1990 computer to run anything, and you're talking about the heart of our community when it comes to water? The other two, you know, the line softening system, he gives you a worst-case scenario, but I mean, the reality of the situation is, is if it goes down, it goes down. That's the risk we have to assume if we don't include that in the digital purchase.
In the maintenance, I mean, the plant is very well-maintained. It's just to the point that the equipment's wore out.
How's the structure under it?
Well, that's why I would like to see you go with both. The 2% and the dollar and a quarter gives us some extra money to do some outside work, because we have some bricks that's coming loose, some steps that are pulling away from the building.
I can interest that a little bit here. In the time I've been here, it's almost been a running joke since the first year I was here with Mike, and we told this story named Water Committee. There's a structural, a insignificant structural issue outside in the steps, where the steps are separating from the building. And every year, we put it on the CIP plan, and every year, something more critical comes up, and so we scrap our plans to fix the steps and always end up using that money towards doing something critical. So for eight years, fixing the stairs has been on the CIP plan, and in eight years, it hasn't gotten done. It's almost a running joke that we just put it back on the CIP plan every year.
So what's the projected cost of fixing the steps?
For it, like I said, the figures are eight years old.
At this point, great.
So the last I saw was about $15,000 for the steps and some of the brick that are pulling away from the building, and those are up high if they would let loose and some of those are standing there.
So basically, it needs tuck pointed?
Tuck pointed, stuff put back in. I mean, we've got some cracks in the ramp going up that need to be addressed. I mean, things are just settling to the point that, I mean...
Are you talking about steps on the east side or steps in the front of the building?
Both.
Both steps are pulling away?
Well, the ones that are worse are on the backside, which people don't see and aren't used very often.
Right.
And you can see the cracks about this white right now. We keep putting caulk and stuff in there to keep it filled up, but we do so much of that, too.
And one thing I think, though, that you can all be proud of to some degree is, ever since we started paying attention to the sewer plant, which has been, at least since I've, it's existed ever since I've arrived, and probably existed prior to that, Gary and Jim could probably speak more to that, but our rallying cry at the water plant has always been, let's not end up like the sewer department, where we have a facility that's going to require multimillion dollars to approve. And I think something you can be proud of is, in the time we've been dealing with the water plant, the water infrastructure has had a lot of focus on it. You know, we spent $100,000 replacing the CO2 system at the plant.
$150,000 up on Oak Street.
Yeah, dealing, chasing a red water issue up around the golf course that it existed for 20-plus years. I mean, we've had some good successes in the water department, but they've been expensive to deal with, and unfortunately, just like any other department, the older this facility gets...
The more expensive.
You have two choices, where you can either deal with the improvements we need to do, or we can start to get behind, which...
Well, and that's what happened out at the sewer plant. They knew what needed to be fixed, and they were always told, no. Let's let, let's put Band-Aids on it, Band-Aids on it, Band-Aids on it, to the point where Band-Aids wouldn't cover everything anymore, so... And that's when Gary was here, I mean.
Bruce and I serve on the Water Committee, and we met last week, and it was our feeling, you know, address the situation ahead of time, take care of general maintenance, raise the rates, do the $1.25 and the 2%. We even talked about a COLA increase, but we debated that somewhat, but...
I mean, you could do such a thing as the dollar and a quarter now and the 2% January 1st, something like that.
Where you get into the COLA discussion, and all Gary and I have had this discussion several times, there are a couple of utilities that they're, sewer's not one of them, but from the city's perspective, buying power goes down every year if there isn't an adjustment in the rate, and that's the concept behind, you know, the annual adjustment. For instance, storm sewer was put into place in 2006. It's the same rate it was in 2006. Gas, a lot of people probably would not realize that the city's portion of gas, that is not paid directly for the commodity itself. The 30 cents per therm we receive today is the same it was when the gas utility was put into place back in the...
60s, 62.
Back in the early 60s. We're collecting the same level of revenue today we were receiving in gas back in the 60s, if you can believe that. The ones that have seen a lot of alteration lately, garbage, which we know what's going on there with the land, with the changes at the landfill commission and what we expect to occur in the future, and then, of course, we all know what's been going on with the sewer plants and the facility improvements.
Does that increase my water pressure?
Yes, it will. Pull up that valve back now.
Does anyone have any questions?
So your figure of $1.79 a month?
Yes.
Is the total, if we would do the $1.25 a month plus the 2%?
Against an average.
The average is 4,000 gallons a month, so if you use more than that, it's going to be more. If you use less, it's going to be less, based on the amount of water.
Right, but that would be the actual total per month, so they're looking at 20-some dollars increase a year on their walk, 20 whatever it is, nine, eight, something like that.
Have you guys went out for prices on fixing those steps today?
Yes, I've got all the prices and...
You do?
Ready to go. I got the loan application to go.
No, I mean for the steps outside, if you got an estimate.
No, we'll have to do that again.
I'd like to see that, because we might as well do it all at one time, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you know, the funny thing back is, I look back, Gary, whether it was the money we decided to allocate towards the red water project that originally wasn't planned for, or when we had the wellhead go down and the $35,000 we spent fixing the wellhead. I mean, there's always been something.
The gearbox went down, which was $30,000, which, you know...
And then there was your line softening issue that you guys had at the plant when...
That's what I mean, the gearbox.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Well, and right now, you're very fortunate. There's three of you down there that are very technical and can fix stuff and handy at fixing things, so you're fortunate in that.
Greg is so handy at fixing stuff, and Darlo pretty much takes care of all the lab work, all that kind of stuff, and...
So you guys are fortunate in that regard.
And now we're taking care of the pool.
Does the plant still have the capacity to supply more than what we need in the city, like we...
We're running a 750 gallon a minute right now. It's capable of doing 1,000 gallons a minute. If we would ever have to do that, we would have to run another line to the water tower, because our distribution system will not handle that much pressure. So, and there's already one stubbed up the hill, so we would just have to continue up the hill up to the tower, and that was in the original bid when the plant was built, so...
One of the things we've tried, we've done recently, and of course, there's no numbers back to even start to have this conversation yet, with some of the internal efficiencies that we, it's something we've had our eye on for a while, when finally we were able to do it, and that is the cemetery water line improvement. You know, in the world of water, one of the things that you're constantly chasing is the amount of loss in the system. These systems are old, you lose a lot of processed water out in the system, and it isn't metered to anybody, so therefore, nobody pays for it. And one of the places where we found a significant amount of water being lost in the system was out at the cemetery, so...
Like a soaker hose.
So one of the things that we have been wanting to do for some time was to have an opportunity to get that fixed, and you've noticed that this spring, we went through and did a major improvement up at the cemetery, where we replaced quite a bit of the line out there.
Pretty much replaced it all.
Yeah.
Did you replace it in the lower level, too?
I had, there was some, there was some that was not.
Okay, I know they did up on top.
Having walked, been walking through there, looking for some tombstones and...
Yeah, and kids love to just walk, drive by and open up the hydrants and let them run. We've had the cable guy stop down the plant, "Is that water running out there?" And I thought, "Well, why didn't you shut it off?"
Years ago, dude, Jim, we had people coming in from out in the farms with their tanks, filling up their tanks, taking the water out of the farms. Our water.
Which is a good idea.
So we put our loss out there.
Oh, we do, we do.
Very significant, so...
Yeah, last year, it was running 20,000 to 30,000 gallons a month, just seeping out of the pipes out there.
Well, we anticipate, so we recognize that it's something that's...
Tree and grass and cream.
By the way, the cemetery did look good.
So just, you know, doing some rough figures here, it looks like if we do the 1.25 and the 2%, that gives you 17,030...
Almost 25,000 between the two.
It gives you 17,030 or something like that, in excess of what the loan payment would be.
Right, which would pay for the...
That kind of pays for, so that within one year would pay for the steps and the top one, you know. What happens if we do somewhat less increase? I mean, I'm just, I mean, I personally, I think our water rate right now is 8.75.
The minimum.
The minimum, or the minimum is 8.75. I personally would like to see that start with, I mean, I think, looking at it as a single-digit and not a double-digit, I mean, that's just...
The thing is, when you do the minimum rate, you're guaranteed the money.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is that if we did a buck instead of a buck and a quarter, it would be a decrease, put into your figures, about $30,000, $320,000.
I tapped into some more, I got used to my figure.
Well, I mean, I just took, I took, if you take the 17, 160 divided by five, that's, you know, that would be, but would that, I mean, it would, it would, it would be a little bit...
You're just delaying the inevitable.
So I guess my question is, so 17,000 in the first year is going to be paying for steps, bricks, or whatever. What do you foresee?
The roof needs to be replaced on the garage down there, and if we're going to do that, you may as well go with a metal roof. It's going to last forever. I mean, that's, the roof's 21 years old, the shingles have never been replaced, and there's just ongoing maintenance inside. There's going to be more equipment, it's going to break down, and none of it's cheap. I mean, we're having problems with our filters right now, and we don't know if it's caused from the SCADA system or what's going on, but every time we work the filter now, we have to crawl down 10 to 15 foot and mess with our air valves or a filter store, so we know we've got an issue coming up there. So the more money that we can put back right now, the better off we're going to be now and in the future.
What's the status of our wells, our efficiency on our wells right now?
Two of them are pretty good. The one at the swimming pool was supposed to be done, I don't know how many years ago, and it just keeps on, keeps on running. The other two, we've had issues with, they've had to be pulled and replaced. This one is going to have to be pulled probably in the next year or two, because it has not been pulled for 15 years, and it's the only one that has the above-ground pump, so we've got 130-foot of pipe that's been sitting there and rotting from inside and out. We need to have it televised and see what's going on, because it is losing efficiency gallons per minute. So I mean, that's another thing that's going to have to be done. I mean, we tried to do, schedule $15,000 a year just for maintenance on the wells, but if you would have to pull one like we did a year ago, that doubles in price. And I don't want to have to borrow money internally to pay for stuff, and then have to pay it back, and if we have the money sitting there, we have the money sitting there.
One of the nice CIP items that we don't have to worry about, or we shouldn't have to worry significantly about, is the painting of the water tower, because it is built into the service agreement we have with the company.
Even if we change it when they come to paint it?
We're not 100% sure on if we want to incorporate the logo, that there won't be a small fee associated with the logo right now, but we're finding out. We just sent them the design a month or so ago.
Not even now.
Yeah, so I mean, that's not all settled out at this point, yeah.
You know, and then you've got to decide the logo and whatever else you want on it. I mean, you could do a lot of different things.
The reason I have to talk to Adam about COLA, that makes us more preactive rather than reacting. We react on everything when we have a problem, then we've got bump our rates so high. If we do a little bit each year, it's just as totally noticed as much. I don't know how popular that is out there, but at the state convention, they talk about it.
Most people I talk to would rather see a small increase every year than all of a sudden 25 to 30%.
You know, I think, you know, this is just the cost of doing business, take care of infrastructure, keep equipment up, and have the best technology, or I won't say necessarily the best, but good technology, you know, the Band-Aid thing of just scraping them by is not a good philosophy to follow, and then what happens is, is then you've got the real issues that come up that end up costing more money in the long run. So, you know, I know Jim doesn't, in the water plant, people don't look for ways to spend money. You're efficient with it, so, you know, I think just deal with the cost of doing business. You know, nobody likes to raise anything, but, you know, that's just the cost of doing business.
One thing that would be interesting is if back in 2008, when we changed the water rates, if we would have put a COLA in at that time...
We wouldn't be doing this.
We wouldn't be doing this. That's a good marker in this discussion, honestly, is we, if you look at our approach to how rates, and this isn't just our approach, this is most communities' approach, they increase it because there's a buying power gap that exists, and then they go 10 years without changing the rate. Well, what has happened in 10 years? At 2.5% to 3.5% buying power reduction on an annual basis, they've seen a significant, you know, you're talking between a 20 and 35% reduction in their buying power in a 10-year cycle. And so you build efficiency, and then, of course, what happens is you look around and go, well, where are the efficiency improvements? The efficiency improvements are eaten up by the buying power issue over that period of time, so...
You know, and another thing that we've talked about, too, is if we do it, is to educate the public, either through newspaper or whatever other means that we have, of saying, here's why. You know, people's logic, you know what it's going for and the necessities of it, you understand, and it doesn't make it necessarily easier financially, but it makes it more palatable and understanding why.
You know, there's, there's a lot of people that come to the Chamber coffees that go to different places where they sit and visit about, like, morning coffees, and they, maybe it would be good if you came to that and spoke about this to the people that go to that, seriously, help them have an understanding of why, you know? Because there's a lot of, well, there are a lot of retired folks that go to the morning and afternoon coffees where they discuss everything, and a lot of times, they don't have the true facts. I think it might be a really good thing if, and it, maybe not today, it is today, but maybe next week, you'd be prepared to do that.
Sure, sure.
It's one of the only contacts we have with any number of people, and if they announced, like, they sent out an email about it, if they announced that you were going to be there at the next coffee, maybe other people would come to hear.
True.
Are you talking about Chamber Coffee? Yeah, yeah.
I want people to go there.
Do that.
And understand, with everything that's been going on with sewer, this is not the ideal time to have this conversation, but the feeling, when Jim and I talked before, we brought the Water Committee together, was this was something that has to be done. The SCADA system is, losing the SCADA system is absolutely a major, critical issue, and it's scary when the people you hired come in and maintain it are sitting there talking about complete failure.
I was going to say, didn't that guy just come a couple weeks ago and say that, or a week ago or something, and tell you guys that?
Exactly. Two or three times in the last month.
That's something you'd never watch your computer people to tell you, is complete failure.
Is he kind of, get kind of a yak out of it a little bit?
I think when you work for Automatic Systems...
Check your attitude at this point.
I think one of the classes I go through is swerving.
Did he pass our field class?
They all, well, they pass it, not the flying colors. They are very good at what they do, they can be a bit gruff to work with, but they are very good at what they do.
If we were to do this, would we just put it on the agenda for the next meeting? Is that the next city council meeting, or just...
My, what I would plan to do is, we're two... My, what I would plan to do is, we're two weeks, we're generically two weeks out from the next council meeting. I would probably introduce, I would have it ready for introduction at the next, yeah, at the next council meeting. There's actually nothing binding with the loan option. And since it's competitive, and when the money's gone, it's gone for the loan option, I went ahead and told Jim to move forward with applying, um, to see if we'd qualify for the loan. So that if we did decide that we wanted to move forward-
We'd be that far ahead?
We'd be that far ahead. Because it's not, there's no committal to it at this point. Simply, I didn't want to lose out on that option because we continued to go through the steps.
Is that a loan option that reloads at June 30?
It's a revolving loan fund, so they have money coming in all the time. And I know originally, because I used to work for National Rule Water, they got like a 500,000 or a million-dollar grant from the government to start it, so... The 3% is pretty cheap.
Are there any further questions for Jim, anything you-
Thank you for all of your work and putting this together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
I guess one other question that I thought maybe we were going to touch on this this morning too, I wasn't sure. The, um, the, the mapping of all of the water lines-
Oh, the G I, G Iassing. I mean, that's something, you know, with this extra money coming in, because it's broken out into just water, sewer, and gas. I mean, you can do one, you can do all three. You know, you can do one one year, one the next year, one the following year, and everything integrates once they get the system set up, so...
And engineering conversations I've had with the department heads, I've indicated to them is why my recommendations to the council would likely flow around it being something we would consider moving forward with in all departments, except, I hate to say, a sanitary sewer. And that's not because of the lack of necessity there, simply a lack of funds to, in order to, uh... I don't know if you remember looking at the report you received, but if you look, the cost for the sanitary sewer is the lion's share cost of what the program costs.
And really, it's not that critical on sanitary sewer anyway, because about, there's no valves to open or shut or have to find. It's mainly just knowing where the lines are, you know, flow direction. For water and gas, you have a lot of valves. They're working off, the main map they work off is 1963. You know, and then they just draw a little circle there, and if they don't mark what it was, they don't know.
Not real accurate, either from what I've seen on it. It's within a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So, the cost for the water department to do that then would be roughly 11,000 to 2,400 a year? If these figures are still accurate?
They'd be pretty close.
Pretty close.
Are, are we comfortable putting that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Well, thank you, guys.
Yep. Thank you, Jim.